As many of the Starful Board of Alderman will now come to order, please rise for the saying of the pledge of allegiance. For ceremonial purposes, the flag will be overheated. After which Alderman Vaughn would like to open us with a word of prayer and we will observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Most of all wise, all Lord, all powerful, all seeing, all hearing, all understanding God. Again, Father God, it is a few of your handmaid childrens. Again, we come before you, Father, with the files of the city before us. We come again before you, Father God, asking you please forgive us of all our sins. Father God, to make us righteousness, that we will be able to handle these affairs of the city in a Godly way. We ask you now to take our hearts and our rings of our minds. Let us examine ourself before any decision be made. Let us examine the city for the low income, no income, fixed income, no matter what race, no matter what sex. Father, we ask you now to be with us. God, this may have been the board and the department heads in the direction that you want us to go. I ask you now to fill this place with your Spirit. Fill this place with love. Fill it with peace, with goodness and kindness. Fill it with mercy, Father God, but most of all, fill it with your righteousness. And, Father God, at the end of the day, we will look to the hills which comes all our help, because we know all our help comes from you. We thank you so much. We thank you for your darling son, Jesus, who died on Calvary, to gave his life for this what we're going through, the sins, the sickness of the world. But we ask you to grant us the knowledge, wisdom and understanding that you can grant King Solomon, being able to saw right and wrong and good and evil for your peoples. Bless us right now. Bless us now in a special way, a way that you will be very pleased with us, you will be very pleased with our decision making. And, Lord, we give all praise and glory and honor to you, because of where you are and who you are. It is in Jesus' name that we do pray. Amen.
You have before you a copy of the written agenda. Are there any proposed revisions to the agendas written?
Alderman Wynn. Yes. On item four, approval of board, Alderman minutes, remove that from consent.
All right.
I'm asking that it be removed from the agendas.
Removed from the agenda altogether? Okay, that'll require consent from the board. Alderman Wynn has proposed revising the agenda to remove the February 17th, 2015 minutes from the agenda. Alderman Wynn, is that your proposal revision? Do I hear any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Is there a reason? Are they deficient?
There's a, we, there were two copies that went out. There was a copy that went in the pack. There was a copy that was posted online and we just wanted an opportunity to clean that up and have a single set out there.
Okay. Any objection? Any objection? Saying none, the minutes have been removed from the agenda. Alderman Wynn, do you have further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions from the members of the board? Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Seeing no proposed revisions, a motion to approve the agenda as revised is in order. Motion has been made, Alderman Vaughn, to approve the agenda as revised. Do I hear second? Motion has been seconded, Alderman Little, Alderman Vaughn, he was speaking on the merits. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussions? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Roll call.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We have Alderman Maynard joining us telephonically, so per state law, all votes will be taken by roll call this evening. So, please respond by saying yea, nay, or abstain as the clerk calls your name on Alderman Vaughn's motion to approve the agenda.
I'm gonna go around the table and see. Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Little. Yea. Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
I'm sorry, I skipped Alderman Maynard. Alderman Maynard.
Yea.
And Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
What's the total?
Seven.
By vote of seven in favor with zero against, this measure passes. You now have before you the approval of the consent agenda. I usually take that by consent, but since everything needs to be done by roll call tonight, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, we'll have a roll call vote. Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion? Do I hear a second? Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little, Alderman Vaughn, he was speaking on the merits. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussions? Saying none, please answer yea, nay, or abstain on Alderman Vaughn's motion to approve the consent agenda as the clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Wynn.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Maynard.
Yea.
By vote of seven in favor with zero against, the motion to approve the consent agenda passes. That will take us to announcements by the mayor and members of the board. I have no announcements this evening. Are there any announcements or comments from the members of the board? Alderman Wynn.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recognize all of the chiefs that asked to here, visit us and have them stand.
I'll tell you what, could you stand and introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name is Ruben Brown, Sr. I'm the Fire Chief of Greenville, Mississippi.
Good afternoon. My name is Marcus Banks. I'm the Fire Chief of Greenwood, Mississippi.
Good afternoon. My name is Markellus McDowall, I'm the Training Chief of Greenwood, Mississippi.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ronnie Willis, Fire Chief Grenadier, Fire Farmer.
Very good to have you with us. Are there any further announcements or comments from the members of the board? Any further announcements or comments? Any further announcements or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments. I would ask anyone wishing to make citizen comments to come to this part of the room so that you would be facing the board. And me, I guess. Are there any citizen comments? Any citizen comment? Are there any citizen comments? Seeing no citizen comments, the next matter that we have before you is interviews for candidates for Fire Chief. Alderman Little.
Mayor, a move. We're going through closed session, determine if we need to go into executive session.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to go into a closed session to determine whether there is a need for an executive session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Carver. Alderman Little, he was speaking on the merits. Any discussion? Alderman Perkins.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Turney, there's been a motion and second to go into executive session, so as I understand the law in the state of, this great state of Mississippi, that we only can go into executive session if it's gonna be something that relates to job performance or a specific matter, if any, that may be in a personnel file, is that a correct statement of the law?
Correct. The statute says if the discussion is about job performance, character, or competency of an employee. That's correct.
Okay, so I guess we can further expand on that in the closed session determination.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify. Please respond by saying yea, nay, or abstain as the clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
I'm sorry. I didn't know what was going on. I'm sorry. Yea. Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Alderman Maynard.
Yea.
Seven oh, Mayor.
By vote of seven in favor with zero against, this motion passes. At this time, I will ask the public to vacate the premises so the board can begin closed session deliberation.
[inaudible]
I'm sorry? Oh. Did you see that? Really? Okay. All right, disconnect. We all?
I'd like to be back. I'm sorry. Do we all? I'm sorry. Nothing about you. We gotta wait till they get some O V V. Hurry, boss. We're gonna hold on.
This person cannot be reached. [inaudible]
Hang on a second. Hey. Hello? Hello? They're trying to dial you in. That's, that's, answer that line. That's the one we're using. That's the secret code. Okay. Okay. He's like, who's trying to call me? [laughing] Mayor. We better swap seats with that following situation. We're gonna need to sit down there. I'm amenable, whatever works. I don't know how weather's gonna hear. Let's see.
Alderman Maynard, can you hear us?
I can, yeah.
All right, great.
All right. I'm putting you in the center of the table. All right, can you still hear us?
Yeah.
All right. All right, the board has passed a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter related to the job performance, character, and professional competence of the internal applicants for the position of Fire Chief. At this time, I'll ask that the public, again, vacate the premises so the board can begin executive session deliberations. We will proceed with our interviews and our first interviewee is Mike Chandler.
Mayor, do you want, since the door's open, do you want to give your normal, I guess, just announcement to the room about asking candidates not to listen only after other candidates give?
Sure, I'll be glad to. We don't, I'll tell you what, Grant, go ahead and invite them all in. All right, manager Chandler, I'm gonna make an announcement to the candidate pool as a whole, so you'll just sit tight for a second when I make that announcement. We'll move into your interview. Everybody come on in the room for a second. The interview process for department heads in a municipality that uses the form of government, we use as a unique process and that interviews for department heads occur in a public meeting and is a very public event. Other than that, the interviews probably won't differ much from any interviews you've had in the past, but there are certain restrictions that are placed on what I can compel you to do. For instance, I can't compel any of you not to be in the room while one of your fellow applicants is interviewing, since it is a public meeting. I do always ask, as a professional courtesy, for you to consider volunteering not to be in the room, because it makes the interview process more fair to all applicants. I see that you have, prior to my asking, that volunteered to do so, so I do appreciate that, and I would just ask, as you wait in the hall, that there is potential access to information through social media, media channels, and other modes of information that comes in and out of the room, just to please try to avoid finding out anything that might give you an advantage or give one of your fellow applicants a disadvantage. So, at this time, I cannot compel you to go back in the hallway, but if you do wish to volunteer, I certainly recommend it. All right, manager Chandler, I've been over most of the housekeeping that I usually do at Starful. The way this process will proceed is I will ask you a few introductory questions and then I will open that up to the board and board members will have an opportunity to ask you questions for a period as well, and once the board has concluded, I'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions of us that you may have. Prior to asking my own questions, do you have any opening statements you'd like to make?
No, sir.
Thank you so much for being here and thank you for your interest in this position. It speaks volumes that you were willing to go through this process. Could you please explain how your experiences to date have prepared you to lead the emergency response portion of a fire department?
Yes, sir. I have over 25 years of experience in the fire service. During that time, I have prepared myself through the technical training, the certifications that you need for your basic firefighting, EMS, technical rescue response. Once I reached a supervisory level, I began going to management classes that involved the conceptual concepts of fire service management. I am a continual learner. I enjoy the profession. I believe I bring skill sets to the department that will make the department better, better to the public.
Could you explain how your experiences to date have prepared you for the fire code inspections and enforcement side of the fire department?
Yes, sir. I've been through the inspection classes at the State Fire Academy as well as the investigative classes as a company officer. I've conducted the initial investigations of fire. I've also been involved at Columbus Company, the engine companies, they do inspections, so I've been certified in the code and I've conducted numerous business inspections. In my current position as accreditation manager, I'm involved with every facet of department operations, writing of plans, policies, et cetera, that's involved with coding inspections.
And finally, manager Chandler, could you assess the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities of the Starful Fire Department as you see them today?
Yes, sir. From my personal knowledge of the department, I got on the website, I read about the department, and I had the opportunity to talk with several former firefighters that you had with the department, and I want to say that Starful has got a quality department. They've got quality personnel. It's an exceptional department that you should be proud of, especially the code enforcement and the sprinkled ordinances that you go, that's top notch. Any department in the state would be proud to do what y'all are doing right now. I've also looked at the training requirements that you do internally before the promotion process, that's real strong, and that's something to be said about that as far as preparing personnel to assume those positions prior to promotion. Looking at it, I feel that there are several opportunities to better the department. The first one would be in public education. I would like to adopt an all hazards approach to a public ed, especially looking at going just more beyond of what y'all are providing now as far as schools, school tours during Fire Prevention Month, or your smoke detector program. Roughly 16% of the population of Starful is classified at risk age group, that being children under five or senior citizens over 65. I believe there's some opportunities that we can address some of those issues with those age groups. From my understanding, there's only several people at O C H that does child safety or child pasture safety seats. We do that at Columbus, it's been real effective. The Mississippi Department of Health, they mandate that daycare workers get continuing education hours, and I see that as an opportunity for the department to provide that training as well. One thing that I am big on is a stronger presence in the community of the fire department. We have a issue at Columbus, they don't know what we do, so they just assume that we just sit around and wait on calls and sleep, which is not the case. So, I would propose that we have a strong public presence, look at partnering with several agencies in the city, like the school district, go into elementary classes and having like an adopted engine company kind of thing to where you can go to the classes at lunch, recess, and kind of have a mentoring, which kind of reinforces some of the stuff that teaches that we do during public ed. Looking at the park and recreation, if they have summer programs for kids, I would like to see starting a fire academy for kids during that time. One thing that we do at Columbus, which I feel like is unique, it's called CFR Guilds. Basically, during the year of the fire department, we raise money during the year, and then at Christmas time, we provide financial aid or relief to needy people within the city. For example, we paid, we helped pay for some medications on some elderly that couldn't afford their medication, single parent homes, we paid a utility bill for them so that they would have, you know, some money for their children at Christmas time, and I think that's a unique opportunity here as well. And lastly, I know prior to Chief Maynard's retirement, he had looked at going through the accreditation process, whether or not that's still a goal of the department. I think that that's an opportunity to bring in the principles and concepts of accreditation into the department to make it better. For instance, using analytics, looking at our incidents, where we're going, why are we going, who are we going for, is, that goes back to the target age group, can we do something from public ed to address those specific needs? Accreditation, we looked at the effectiveness of the programs that we're providing. A, is it what the community needed? Are we providing it in an effective manner through specific performance criteria? The other thing that I would like to bring is a community-driven or a community-based strategic plan, and that was one of the requirements that we did at Columbus, which matched what we were doing with the community needs as well as what they expected us to do. And the other feature was that our strategic plan was aligned with the city's comprehensive plan, so it all flowed together. Personally, I believe accreditation is here for the future. That's the way that the fire services are gonna be going, going through the concepts and the principles. As an example, the Fire Rating Bureau, they went to a new grading system, which is similar to what I S O or many other states use now, which has objective grading criteria, and many of the grading criteria of the new rating, it translates back to what we do in accreditation, so we basically have a leg up over everybody else and maybe having a chance to improve the fire rating.
Alderman Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Chandler, I have six questions, and I want to ask each applicant who's appeared before us the same questions.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not gonna have any follow-up questions, it's gonna be basically clear questions. My first question is, what is the one most important function of any fire department?
Is to provide the services and programs that the community needs.
Second question is, Fire Chief, what is your direct responsibility when you arrive on a fire scene?
Would be to evaluate what is going on prior to the arrival. Most of the time, you already have the incident command set up with your battalion chief. If he's doing a good job, then mine, my role would be to let him maintain and run the scene and give him the support that he needs.
Third question, when you are delegating functions within the fire department, are you delegating authority or are you delegating responsibility? Explain your answer.
Delegating responsibility. One of the chief roles of the...
What's your answer?
Authority.
Okay, go ahead.
One of the chief, my view of an effective leader is to establish a clear vision and direction for the department, get your personnel in and develop a strategy for accomplishing that goal. Once that's done, delegate to your personnel, give them an opportunity to learn and develop by going through that process, learning from their achievements or learning from their mistakes.
Question four, what is the fire rating for the city of Starful?
A class four.
Number five, what is the minimum staffing number of a fire station with a fire rating of four?
For the city of Starful, I believe the latter company maintains a minimum of four and the engine company maintains three.
Question number six, how many years have you served in a command position in fire suppression?
I am on my 14th year. I was promoted to company officer in 2003.
Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Chandler, thank you so much, Sharon. What is your experience handling the budget?
I served as a board member for a volunteer fire department. We set the budget, we prioritized our needs, and I was directly responsible for four separate accounts that had a line item budget and similar to the city of Starful. Additionally, from 2004 through 2009, I worked with Homeland Security and Grant Administration that looked specifically at the financial management of the budgeting. As an accreditation manager, I have implemented several processes internally within the department that aids the current Fire Chief in establishing a budget and setting priorities.
What was the amount of that budget that you...
The city of Columbus has a budget of 4.6 million. The volunteer budget, the four accounts totaled roughly 125,000, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Thank you. One of my questions would have been to you, you are appointed Fire Chief of the city of Starful, what would the vision be comprised of? I'll meet you there.
Hmm, I am on my fourteenth year. I was promoted to company officer in two thousand and three.
Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Alden Webb.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Mr. Chandler, thank you so much. What is your experience in handling the budget?
Uh, I served as a board member for a volunteer fire department, uh, we set the budget, we prioritized our needs, uh, and I was directly responsible for fires, for four separate accounts that had a line item budget and similar to, uh, the city of Starkville. Additionally, uh, from two thousand and four through two thousand and nine, I worked with Homeland Security and Grant Administration that looked specifically at, uh, the financial management of, of the budgeting. As a accreditation manager, I have implemented, uh, several processes internally within the department that aids the current fire chief in establishing a budget and setting priorities.
What was the amount of that budget?
Uh, the city of Columbus has a budget of four point six million, uh, the volunteer budget, the four accounts, uh, totaled roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Thank you. One of my questions would have been to me, if you are appointed Fire Chief of the city of Starkville, what would the vision be comprised of? I'll need you to answer that because I've listened to it. You could create a mission statement for our city for that model. What's your mission statement?
The mission statement would be to protect and serve through incident mitigation, EMS response, uh, through code enforcement, as well as public education.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have another question.
Alden Little. Mr. Chandler, you just touched on the budget, which is one of my questions, and you also touched briefly on being a class four fire rating here. Tell the board your thoughts on our rating and plans to keep the city moving forward for a possible class three fire rating in the future.
I would look at the, uh, rating schedule, where you're at, looking at where improvements can be made. Uh, that goes back to accreditation, one thing that I, uh, neglected on accreditation was the response, uh, the response time of the units, uh, from the time the call comes in till the time that we get on scene, uh, looking at that, seeing if we are providing the coverage that is necessary, that meets national standards. Uh, having a, uh, I know that the grading system looks at, uh, code enforcement as well as public education, uh, strengthening up those.
What are your hot button issues? In other words, what would be the first thing, uh, you're going to address at this point?
Hmm, that's a good question. From a standpoint, I would, uh, like to come in the department and get an overall feel, uh, talk with the guys, see what, see the direction or, you know, the, the culture of the department, get an assessment of that, and then, uh, based on that, seeing where we're, uh, where improvements can be made.
Alden Walker.
Thank you for coming in, sounds like you have a, a wealth of experience and, and knowledge. Um, why would you, why are you interested in being the, the Fire Chief and for the city of Starkville?
I love fire service, so when I first started out, it kind of gets in your blood. As I moved up the ranks, it become a goal of mine to have an opportunity to be chief one day. Academically, uh, I, I tried to improve myself to develop the experience, the knowledge and skills to be at that level. And I've used Starkville as an exceptional opportunity. Again, the, the quality of the department, it's outstanding, the personnel, uh, it would just, uh, give me an opportunity, uh, to lead the department and try to, you know, better the community.
Any further questions from the members of the board? Alden Carter.
I'm a firefighter manager at one time.
Uh, I was a company officer at Station One, which had two crews, and that involved supervising eight, seven, I'm sorry, seven personnel.
Maybe you credit staff now.
Well, in my position, as accreditation manager, I deal with all members of the department, uh, mostly the company officers, there's eighteen, uh, I, I have to implement some processes that they're responsible for carrying out.
Any further questions from the members of the board?
I have one statement. Mr. Chandler, do you understand that if you are appointed, that you will serve at the wheel of this board and our terms expire in June of twenty seventeen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You may want to specifically ask Maynard, because when I was on air, you may want to ask him if he has any questions.
Alderman Maynard, do you have any questions for Manager Chandler?
No, I do not.
Manager Chandler, do you have any questions for us?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Joel, let's see what you've got. Who do you have next, Mayor?
Next, we have Marshall McMullin.
McMullin?
Mm-hmm.
First off, thank you so much, uh, for applying, yeah, and being willing to go through this process. This is not an easy, uh, job interview, uh, because it is a group interview and it takes place, uh, in a public meeting, yeah. It means a lot, uh, that you have that level of commitment to the department to do that. Now, a little housekeeping about how this will work, yeah, at the outset, I'll offer you the opportunity, uh, to make any opening comments, uh, that you may choose, uh, I'll ask you some questions, I'll open the floor for the board to ask you some questions, uh, and finally, uh, I'll give you an opportunity to ask any concluding questions, uh, that you may choose to ask. Any questions about that before we get started?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any opening comments you'd like to make?
I'd like to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to, uh, interview, and I do have a little handout I'd like to give you if I may.
Marshall McMullin, can you explain how your experiences have prepared you to lead the emergency response side of the fire department?
I've been doing this for eighteen years, and, uh, in my eighteen years, I have served as a firefighter, as a sergeant, and in the last ten years as a fire marshal. Being the fire marshal, you're responsible for all aspects of the fire department, from fire prevention to public education, you even deal with fire suppression as far as investigation and processing all the other areas within the fire department. I have been delegated with other aspects of the job, as in making sure that, uh, uniforms and equipment are taken care of. I have been tasked with managing budgets for the public education and for fire investigation. In the process of all that, I have been, when Roger Mann was Fire Chief, he would let me help him with the budgets and, uh, help maintain other aspects of the daily running of the department.
Can you explain how your experiences on the fire code inspection and enforcement, uh, side of the department have prepared you to lead the fire department?
One of the biggest things I see as the Fire Chief would need to deal with, as Roger Mann was able to, is the fire department's biggest thing is obviously fire codes. We prevent, as, but most of the fires are prevented with prevention rather than actually the suppression side of it. And with, uh, learning the fire codes and everything, and contractors and dealing with them, it has given me a better in- insight of how to handle the public, how to handle the contractors, and know what they are looking for whenever they're coming in with a complaint, whether it be a little, little thing, it's access to the building, to something total off the wall, trying to think of one we had the other day, was a contractor wanted to do something that was done twenty years ago, and we had to explain to him that the codes then allowed him to do that, where that code today are designed for our apparatus to be able to get there. And it just, being a fire marshal, probably ninety percent of the fire chiefs dealing, probably would be dealing with contractors, the public, and then the fire personnel themselves, and being the fire marshal dealing with everybody in that aspect, I think will make me a, uh, be able to handle the pressure of the, uh, day-to-day activities of the fire department.
Can you assess the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities, uh, for the Starkville Fire Department as it currently stands?
The strength is the personnel, there's no doubt we have some of the best personnel in the state, if not the best personnel in the state. We have opportunity to become a class three rating, which would allow us to be, very few departments in the state that actually meet that class three. That would be the biggest opportunity for us. The weakness we have is lack of technology. We have so little technology in our department that we need to get where, it, it would speed up our process of arriving on scene, the better return, the better statistics on what we are, right, arrived at times and stuff like that, 'cause right now, our reporting system is, our administrative assistant, LaShonda, has to log everything in by herself, and that takes up the majority for a time, and with the technology being the weakest part, we could allow our battalion chiefs and our captains to allow them to put that in there and get time reports to people that need them, one for insurance purposes and stuff like that.
This time, are there any questions from the members of the board? Alden Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McMullin, I have six questions, and I'm asking all these questions to each applicant. Question number one, what is the one most important function of any fire department?
Fire prevention.
Number two, as Fire Chief, what is your direct responsibility when you arrive on a fire scene?
Make sure the command and control of the scene is managed properly.
Number three, when you're delegating functions within the fire department, are you delegating authority or are you delegating responsibility? Explain your answer.
Kind of delegating both. You give him the, say, the battalion chief the authority to run his shield the proper way, but he's also, he's responsible for running that shield in the manner that is set forth by our SOGs.
What is the, uh, fire rating for the city of Starkville?
Class four.
Number five, what is the minimum staffing number of a fire station with a fire rating of four?
Four, unless it is a ladder truck, then it's five.
Number six, how many years have you served in a command position in fire suppression?
None.
Are you up there?
Further questions from the members of the board? Alden Webb.
Thank you so much, Mr. McMullin. First of all, let me say this to you, do you understand that this is a command position and you serve at the wheel of this board and our terms expire in June of twenty seventeen?
Yes, my pleasure.
If you are appointed fire chief for the city of Starkville, what would your engine plan be comprised of?
Mainly to try to get the, the fire department to a class three, and to get our personnel, the morale in our department is kind of low, but it's, get that brought back up to where it was when I first started.
You could create a mission statement for you, for assuming that you were selected as fire chief. What's your mission statement?
I like our current mission statement, which basically says that we are here to protect and serve the citizens of Starkville and any of those who enter.
What is your experience in handling the budget?
I have been handling the public education budget, which is a small budget of eight thousand dollars for the last nine years, and fire previ- uh, fire investigation budget, which is, I've been handling it for the last eight years as well.
You've answered this question, but I'm gonna ask you again, just for public information. What is your little supervisory experience as it relates to your job at the Starkville Fire Department?
As far as command, none, but I have been supervising the fire investigation team for the last seven years.
Further questions from Alden Little?
I'd like to follow through the board, you mentioned earlier that, uh, one of the strongest assets of the department is personnel, you also just mentioned, Mariah, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
There's a, trying to think how to put this correctly, there's a lot of people that feel, there's some people that don't do enough, and the ones that don't do enough, I always say, they don't want to be here because they got better things to do outside, but I think part of that is just the fact that they feel like they're isolated from everybody, and they need to be brought back in, be part of the team, instead of being allowed to be isolated. We have that, you have the little clique flocking and everything, and every now and then you have that one that doesn't want to be the part of that group, but they just kind of vanish to the side, and nobody pays attention to them, and it brings everybody up down, 'cause they feel like that person's getting away with something when actually they're allowing him to be that way, instead of just sitting there trying to encourage him to do stuff. And they, I always want to make it work, one of the things in my plan there is to start doing committees on different things, whether it's trucks, purchase of trucks, and review the polishing manual and all that, and make everybody have a little sense of pride and ownership into the department, instead of just sitting there riding out their career.
Thank you for the passion, that's impressive, and you may have answered it here, but I haven't had a chance to review it thoroughly. How would you get us to a, what would be your plans to get us to a class three fire rating? What was, what were some deficiencies, or what we, or need, what to get us to that point?
Obviously personnel, one of the outlined stations, need to get that brought up. Another one is the, uh, trucks, trucks are, we got two trucks that are, one is already out of, sort of, out of the twenty-year range, one is about to be, need to get those replaced, and then work with the water department and get our hydrants and everything like that tested to bring them up to where they need to be to get full rating for that.
What are your hot button issues, or in other words, what was the first thing that you're going to do to address at this point?
I'd like to address our personnel policy. It's lengthy, wordy, it could, I think it can be condensed to eliminate a lot of the issues that we have as far as the run late policy, which is kind of outdated, several other things is outdated, and it's, I mean, it's, a lot of it hasn't been changed in twenty years, some of it has been changed in the last six months, which, as y'all know, the, uh, promotion system was changed, and I'd like to do the way the promotion system was, done through a committee, do the rest of it like that, and bring it more up to date and more confirmed with what today is.
What can be improved in our fire department by putting in this chief?
I think the community awareness of the fire department would have been improved, 'cause I want our guys to be more community involved, instead of, I want them to be seen at community events, like Starkville High Football, I want our guys to be there in case something happens, if, so, something's going on here at the sportsplex. I want to have a group of guys here just for, not necessarily just to be seen, but also to be there just in case a kid gets hurt playing soccer or softball, and just make them more visible, more known throughout the community.
Further questions from the members of the board? Alden Carter.
Thank you for applying. Talk a little bit about this deputy chief position, why do you think there's a need for this?
When I first got hired, we had a deputy chief under the chief, and the deputy chief then was responsible for making sure the hydrants were tested annually, making sure that everybody had the proper equipment at all times he took care of, the deputy chief operations, and make sure everything was passed on from shift to shift. And one of the things that we, I think we hate lacking is communication from shift to shift on a daily basis, and with that deputy chief, he can maintain that properly. Another thing I think we have a problem with is conflict of scheduling. We have training going on a day along with, uh, public education event, and we should, we'll do one of them and won't do the other, and allow the deputy chiefs to coordinate that properly. And then he'll be able to assist whenever the chief's out of town, he'll be able to take chief spot, so basically there won't be any loss of control.
Uh, I noticed you didn't have a college degree, which college credits or fire-based classes have you completed, and how do you feel that they pertain to be sufficient for this position?
National Fire Academy classes are college-based classes, I've had three up there, and they were fire, uh, structures and technology pertaining firearm systems, another one was fire prevention coordination, and all of them were basically pertaining to inspection and all. As far as college credits, I've had, uh, I basically minored in mathematics, which I think would help me with the budget and pretty much anything concerning the finance side
Further questions from Marshall McMullin?
Yeah, thank you for, for interviewing, uh, Willis, uh, you have to think your credentials are, are well-established. Question is, in your current role as fire marshal, how do you see that, do you see that as being an advantage for, uh, expanding on the community, uh, perception or relationship that you have, uh, that you could help the fire department achieve, uh, overall?
I, I do, because, like I said, the majority of the fire services are fire prevention nowadays, instead of just fire suppression. We... We fly probably 20 fires a year where fire prevention goes on every building, every new construction, every remodel and I have a working relationship with pretty much all the contractors that we deal with in town. And I think it would make it easier having somebody that has the fire inspection, fire marshal background to deal with and answer those questions and have the knowledge because the inspectors, if they have a question, I would be the one making the final say-so, whether yes, that's code or no, that's not, where if somebody doesn't have that background will still rely on us as the fire inspector to make that call.
Further questions from Marshall McMullin? Any further questions? Are there any further questions? Marshall McMullin, do you have questions for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, would y'all like to do one more interview or take a break?
One more.
One more? Brandon. Please have a seat. Are you? Kurt, you would save one for the floor. Alden Mayor, just to check, are you still with us?
Yes, I can hear you perfectly.
All right, Chief Randall, just a little housekeeping before we begin. The process is a fairly abnormal process for a job interview in that it is a group interview and it occurs in a public meeting. And I thank you so much for being willing to apply and being willing to participate in this process because it is not easy and it speaks volumes about your commitment to the fire department. Now, the way the process will work is I'll start by offering you any opportunity to make an opening comment that you may wish to exercise. I'll ask you some questions, then I'll open the floor for the board to ask you some questions and finally, I'll give you an opportunity to ask us any questions that you may have. Do you have any questions about the process before we begin?
No, sir. I'd just like to make an opening statement.
It's all you.
My name is Kurt Randall and I'm currently at the Starkville Fire Department. I'm a battalion chief and I'm so glad to be amongst y'all visiting. Really appreciate y'all for giving me the opportunity to go through the process. I was here February 17th and I'm amongst you all and I told you all that if I was appointed entering chief, I would not apply for the permanent position. I was not appointed entering chief, so I thought about it, thought long about it and I'm here tonight. I want to be Starkville Fire Department chief. I have a deep desire to be chief, I have always wanted to be chief and I'm here and I'm ready to endorse this succession here. So with that being said, thanks again for allowing me to be here.
Chief Randall, could you explain how your experiences to date have prepared you for the emergency response side of the fire department and how you would be equipped to be the fire chief on the emergency response side?
Yes, sir, I can. I started with the department in 1989, excuse me, and I got promoted up through the rank from sergeant. I think I was promoted to sergeant in 1993 or 92 and I come through the rank. I was promoted to lieutenant, I think 1996. I was promoted to captain in 2004 and I was promoted to battalion chief in 2013. So I come from the bottom always to the top and I have several years of military. I retired with 26 years, 15 years with armed reserves and I believe 11 with the Mississippi National Guard. So I was the command, I think I was promoted to sergeant in 95. And I'm EMT certified, I just feel that I'm well-equipped for the position.
Could you explain how your experiences have prepared you to lead the fire codes inspection and enforcement side of the fire department?
Yes, sir. We, I think back in 92, we do engine component inspection. Back, you know, in engine company, we go out, we install smoke detectors, we just, you know, disinspect just to make sure everyone within, make sure that they have no violations, make sure they have no, something that could cause a fire. Is that pretty much what you're asking for? Yes, Mayor?
Could you assess the strengths, the weaknesses and opportunities of the fire department as it currently stands?
We're very well-trained, that's the strength. We probably train one of the probably top departments in the state. This is our weakness. I would like to see our department come, get together, have more togetherness, maybe more cohesion. So other than that, but I think, I think we're all right.
All right, questions for the members of the board? Alden first.
Mr. Randall, I have six questions and I'm going to ask these questions to each applicant. And question number one, what is the one most important function of any fire department?
The one most important function of any fire department is to put out fires. I think the book says life safety, incident stabilization and property preservation. So save lives and protect property is the most important.
Number two, as fire chief, what is your direct responsibility when you arrive on a fire scene?
I have some great officers in Starkville Fire Department and if I arrive on scene and what I would do, either I would report to them or they would report to me and I would assess the situation, assess the scene. If everything is going well, which I feel strongly it will be because of my officer, strong officer, I would let them run the show. If everything is going good, if I was observed and if I see something that's out of place, then I would step in and let them know that, you know, well, maybe this may be a better way to do it, but I would just let them do what they do.
Question number three, when you are delegating functions within the fire department, are you delegating authority or are you delegating responsibility? Explain your answer.
You delegate authority, but I know the responsibilities, the upper responsibilities will be mine, so what followed on me, but you delegate authority and, but I would be ultimately responsible whatever happened.
Question number four, what is the fire rating for the city of Starkville?
Class four right now.
Question number five, what is the minimum staffing number of a fire station with a fire rating of four?
With fire rating of four, on an engine company, it's three, not less than three. On a ladder company, you gotta have at least four. We have two ladder companies in Starkville Fire Department and we run four to five personnel on that truck, on that ladder.
Question number six, final question, how many years have you served in a command position on fire suppression?
Since I was promoted to sergeant, which is in 93. As a matter of fact, in 93, we was running too many companies, so I believe some of those time when I was a firefighter, I was in a command position because we, I mean, we had to do with what we, we had to make with what we had back then. I come in the department in 89 and I bet you probably in 90, I probably was acting lieutenant. So with that being said, probably from 93 up until 2015, so 22 years.
Aye, Mayor? Further questions from the members of the board? Alden Webb?
Good evening, Mr. Randall.
Good evening.
Mr. Randall, first of all, let me say this to you, you are an ex-military personnel. I want to thank you for your service to our country for about 24, 25 years?
Twenty-five and a half.
Thank you so much. Additionally, I want to thank you for being a public servant because you are an enlisted official who at our time is constable for our district chief.
Yes, ma'am, my dear.
Thank you so much. I would like to say to you that if you are selected for this position, do you understand that it is an appointed position and that you will serve at the will of this board and our terms expire in June of 2017?
Yes, ma'am, my dear.
Okay. If you are appointed fire chief for the city of Starkville, what would your vision plan be comprised of?
To make Starkville Fire Department my vision plan?
What is your, what is your vision for what you receive if you were selected as fire chief for the fire department?
In our rulebook, our vision statement is Starkville Fire Department would be committed to, Starkville Fire Department would be committed to having the highest, most highly-trained firefight force, best equipment and try to accomplish, try to have the lowest fire rating investigation. That's our rulebook vision statement.
Okay, so that's the rule. And you could create a mission statement, the role of someone if you were selected as fire chief. What would your mission state be?
I would be committed to. I knew it, but I can't think of it right now. Can I come back to it?
Yes, you sure can. What is your experience in handling the budget?
I have a budget in my constable office, so it's not a big budget, but it's a small budget and, you know, I know I have line items and I know I have, if they was in, no line item, so line item. I know that I can't go over, I know that for percentage, you know, I gotta, I mean, I just can't spend a whole lot because I want to save time for later. In other words, just say if I want equipment or uniform and I have to go to a convention later on that year, then I may want to bag off on my equipment, you know, just to have money to attend the seminar, what is required.
What is the budget for Starkville Fire Department?
Three million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-six. That three million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-six, three million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventy that you use for salary and benefit and that leaves five hundred and forty, five hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six for operation expense, which would be like training budget, I think that's forty-seven thousand, nine hundred. I think seventy thousand is our equipment budget and the rest of them just like line items.
I have one more question for you to see. You beat me to it, you addressed it as soon as you got at the table because I'm a servant there with property and massage under the other board. My question would have been, have you at any time represented to this board that you did not apply for the position of fire chief? And I remember that night and I was covering the war's point and you said that to see, after seeing, you say it to us, that you did not, if you were, as in, and I never ever forgot that. You didn't say that you would never apply, you said only if you were not appointed as in. So thank you for addressing that as soon as you said, I'm in your seat. I yield at this time, Mr. Randall.
Further questions? Alden Webb? What would be your plans to get us to our Class III fire rating?
In order to get to a Class III, we have the manpower, we have the water, we have to have a drill tower, training facility and a smoke building. That will be, I think it's gotta be on like two acres, at least two acres, two acre training ground and that would be the two or three.
We have currently some manpower?
I would assume we do. I'm not for certain, but I know those other things that's required in order to get to a three, if we had probably made a notice. I'm not sure about the manpower.
Are all stations fully manned right now?
All except for station five, it's only manned on one shield, so I think that station was built in 2010. Right now, we have it manned on one shield.
What are your hot button issues? In other words, what would be the first thing to address if you wanted to?
First thing I probably would address as a appointed chief would probably be the rulebook on EMT. Let me try to explain it to you. We have to be EMT certified to be employed with the Starkville Fire Department. What happens, we put you on EMT class and which lasts about four or five months or something like that and after you complete the class, you're able to take the national register three times. If you don't pass the though three times, then you can take a refresher, 24 hours, it's very less expensive and you can take it three more. Our department don't allow you to take it three times, you know, then you are back to resign or terminate. So I would like to see, I would like to come before you all and try to get that, let you all look at it, to try to change that to where you're able to take it six times like the national register requires you, you know, will allow you to take it before you have to retake the class. And even with just the refresher, the 24 hours and maybe the personnel could just pay that, you know, pay that refresher fee, which is I think is less than a hundred dollars and allow them to stay on with the department because most time we get an RST into the academy. So we just, you know, I would hate to lose a good person that we've already invested money in just over those other three times and then, you know, it's just, it's just a matter of time. I mean, if they could pass those three times, those other three times, that would help us as well and we could save money.
You've just been mentioned a couple times, you're currently a constable, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I know most of the firemen have some sort of side job or occupation when they're off duty that understands the chief job is.
Yes, sir.
Your chief, you know, seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
My question would be, in your capacity as constable, are you required to be in court on certain days each month and what kind of drain would that put on your position?
No, sir, it wouldn't put a drain at all. I was called to active duty back in 2004, I believe, in Alphacent, Hattiesburg and I was coming on a weekend and doing my constable chores. So if I could drive from Hattiesburg, you know, I feel strong that I could live in here in Starkville, that I could take care of my duties as constable. So no, sir, I don't see it as an inferior, only as being fire chief. The fire department will come first, it has always come first and it wouldn't be a problem. No, sir.
Alden Carver?
Thank you for applying. First of all, anytime we get internal applicants, you know, we get, I like picking out the rank and strengths and weaknesses come out and I just enjoy that part of it. While we were talking about that, in the constable position, do you get a county issued car? Is that how you work out of that car?
No, sir, that car that I'm, the county, you know, by the lights, the, all the bells and whistles, but at four, I have a personal car myself.
That you own that car?
Yes, sir, I own that.
That's what I was gonna say. That's what I was gonna ask you about response time, and, and maybe, you know, if you're, do you, do you issue those all over the county, outside of this county, or just, I mean...
At four a job.
Do you stay always in October County with that position?
No, sir, I, I do a little private processor, if you do on the side, uh, so, usually when I go to another county, I'll let that county know that I'm, that sheriff department, either that police department, that I'm in that county, and I'm about to drop off some, if I go in my patrol car, or if I go in my person vehicle, you know, in the state of Mississippi, you could be a processor anywhere. So, I try to respect that county when I go, to let them know I'm in that county, if I'm in my patrol car or uniform.
So, I guess that's kind of what I was alluding to, is the patrol car, if you're in that, and we got a fire, you're gonna have to run back to your house, and then get in the fire chief car, and then open the fire soon?
Oh, no, sir, I'm gonna come right, I'm gonna come, I mean, if I'm called, regardless of what I'm doing, I, I call my patrol car, or just wherever I'm, I'm, I mean...
Do you drive a county car to the...
Yes, sir. I can do that.
Yeah, okay, that, I mean...
No, sir, the car belongs to me.
Your patrol car?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Um, I was gonna say, how many hours a week do you do as a constable? I know you said you, this is a full-time job, retiring, and it has come first, but...
It varies, I make it do, I make it finish my work within five hours a week. Usually I, when I go out, I go out early in the morning, and by noon, I'm finished, or I may go out early Saturday morning, by noon, I'm finished. I'm pretty good at multitasking, and I just, I mean, I can just keep myself in order, and I'm, I'm pretty organized. So, uh, I've been constable twenty years, and I've never had a problem, even when I go on my convention, like, constable convention, I'm out of town for a week, I come back, from five hours, I'm finished.
Question. Um, I've noticed that you didn't have a college degree. Which college credits or fire-based classes have you completed? And how do you feel is, how do you feel that these are sufficient enough for this position? I noticed that you didn't have a college degree. Which college credits or fire-based classes have you completed? And how do you feel that they're sufficient for this position?
I think a lot of the, uh, fire academy, uh, classes is, is college credit. I know executive fire officer, he is, uh, ten twenty-one, fire officer, uh, ten forty-one instructor, and I've attended so many classes in military leadership. P O D C, which is a two-week class, uh, B N O, which is a two-week, uh, phase one, and two-week phase two, uh, A N O, which is for advanced leadership. I could be with all the classes.
Um, I know you and I discussed last time in your last interview, um, I talked to you a lot, I guess, I really did, I thought you were qualified at that time.
Yes, sir.
You, you several times said you wanted a good fit. What did, and, and that night, I didn't feel like I got a sufficient answer. What do you mean, at that time, you said you wanted a good fit?
I said, I just wanted to make sure I would be a good fit, I think, uh, well, that's what I meant, I don't know what I said, but that's probably what I meant. Kind of probably a bad, and I think that's one of my...
It's a nervous...
Yeah. That's one of my, uh, um, weekly, weekly attributes, I think, uh, awful of a bad, I think I try to think fast when it comes out of my mouth. But, uh, yes, sir, that, that's what it was, probably, uh, I, I could say that's what I meant, I mean, I just wanted to make sure it was a good fit, but I think it is. I, I've always had a desire to be chief, and the opportunity I have to generate yourself now, and that's why I'm here.
And, um, lastly, we had another gentleman that spoke about technology improvements and needs, and maybe some technological advances that we've had in the last ten or fifteen years that could help us in response. Uh, well, I got an internal candidate, I mean, internal applicant. Um, can you explain further, is there anything else maybe we needed to purchase out of the city that could help us respond to fire, or fire suppression?
Like a vehicle or something?
Vehicles, I don't know.
I would like to see the res, I would like to see the rescue truck. Uh, we have a rescue truck at Station One that we hire. Um, instead of running the eight-hundred thousand dollar company to a, a general medical, I would love to see the rescue truck, uh, take that general stuff, and maybe just run the pump into accidents and stuff like that, where it could be a possible spark in a, a cause of fire. The rescue truck, what I would want to.
My father spoke about that, what he's alluding, what he's saying is that they used to run a medical truck on every, I guess you call it a rescue truck, on everything you went to, and maybe that would keep some of these big trucks off the road, I'm just saying that to the board, that it would, uh, you may remember that, and, and it was done away with two administrations ago, but I think that, uh, instead of seeing these big trucks run all over town for a medical call, you'd have a rescue truck that...
Yes, sir.
Could knock out the eighty-plus percent of the call.
Yes, sir.
The last thing I noticed here, I just have to bring it up, we just got finished with Fire Station Five, but you got in here a possible Fire Station Six. And where do you think is the best location for that?
I would think would be somewhere out, um... Somewhere out, maybe, um, Highway twelve bypass, kind of past Station Road, now that way, if not there, maybe, um, maybe out further down by Harsh Park somewhere. I mean, make, you know, so where you can have access to the Harsh Park, because we have to respond to MSU, which, the Harsh Park is a part of MSU. Maybe one of those two places. I would like to get with the board and just, you know, if I'm chosen, uh, I know it's a long-term goal, we start off by growing the way it is, I just think we need to at least start looking at it, maybe hire one firefighter every two years. When that time comes, then we'll help the business back.
Is there one more?
Yes, sir.
And I just, I enjoy having internal candidates. Um, somebody spoke about the morale, maybe the morale's low, do you agree with this? And if so, what are some ways that maybe if you're appointed, you could, uh, increase the morale among firefighters and sergeants and captains?
That's the gatherliness. Maybe, you know, maybe, I mean, have a fire department ball, you know, uh, that would be something good, to, uh, like Christmas and Thanksgiving dinner, maybe start doing that, just invite you all down, and fellowship. I think that would be good.
Thank you.
Alderman. Chief Ray, thank you so much for coming in, and I, and I agree with Alderman Webb and Alderman Carver. Uh, we talked to you last time, we certainly thought that you were a quality candidate, um, and, and were looking at that. Uh, and when I recall, uh, I agree with Alderman Webb, you said that you didn't believe that you, you had, you had chosen. Also, uh, heard you say that, uh, sort of like Alderman Carver alluded to, that, uh, um, you indicated that maybe you, you weren't sure, and you said, and here you said you wanted to make sure and think about it a little bit. What, what changed? What, what changed in your, in your thinking to let you know for sure that, uh, being the, the fire chief at, uh, the Starford Fire Department would be, uh, what you're looking for?
Just my deep desire to always have wanted to be chief. I would want to serve a short, a short period, you know, just to be chief, because that was my desire. But, just my desire, uh, deep desire to be chief. I just, I feel like, you know, I've come through the ranks, and, and I'm at the top. We have an organization chart where it says, you know, fire chief of top, then a battalion chief, and I'm the only battalion chief that applied for this position. I just feel that, I guess I'm just military oriented, you know, we just, just, I just feel that, uh, I believe I could, I know I could do you all a good job, probably make you one of the best chief, uh, in the state, if I do better. I won't let you down, sir.
Any further questions from the members of the board?
I got one second left. More, S C C football in the hall, large maintenance in the spray, they've got five in the house.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do you have any questions for us?
Closing statement, maybe. Got one from Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Can I go pick up my car tonight and key from Chief McCurdy's, or I can have...
Thank you, Alderman. Without objection, I'm gonna move us into recess. An objection, an objection taken. Please, thank you. Our next interviewee is Chief Terry Tucker. Chief, please have a seat.
Thank you.
Oops, sorry.
Excuse me. Thank you so much.
First of all, Chief, thank you for being with us. This is a difficult interview setting, uh, you will be interviewing in front of a group, uh, you will be interviewing, uh, in the middle of a public meeting, uh, speak volumes about your commitment to us, uh, that you have submitted yourself to this process, so, thank you.
Thank you, Officer Lake, I'm gonna interview you.
A little housekeeping about the process, uh, I'll offer you, uh, an opportunity to make, uh, an opening statement, if you so choose, uh, I'll ask you some questions, uh, I'll open the floor for the board to ask you some questions, uh, and then finally, I'll give you, uh, any opportunity, uh, to, uh, ask questions of, of us, to conclude the meeting. Any questions before we get started?
No, sir.
Would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, sir, I, I'm, I'm the fire chief of the city of Oklahoma, I'm fifty-three years old, I'm married and have two children. I'm a second-generation firefighter, my dad's a retired captain from the Greenwood Fire Department, and, uh, grew up in, took in the fire service until my fa, family got in the Sonic driving business, have a... I, I guess I, I was born to be a fire chief, and I learned to be a management in, in the Sonic business. And I was torn between both, and I decided to leave it and go full-time fire service, and that's where my passion's at. That's what brings me to y'all today.
Chief, could you explain how your experiences to this point have prepared you for the emergency response side of fire service?
It's a, in thirty-two years of firefighting experience, it's never the same day. You can be basically, have it on paper, you have your experiences, you can have everything on paper and be prepared, and you just gotta go, learn to go off the paper. You know, you, you, you train for the best of the things, and then you need to go, and then when that day goes, and then you hope it goes that way, but it's gonna go worse sometimes, and you just, you gotta learn to adapt and overcome what the situation is gonna give you, sir.
Chief Tucker, could you explain how your experiences to this point, uh, have, uh, prepared you to, uh, lead the, uh, fire code, inspection, and enforcement side of the fire department?
Um, probably that, the, uh, the fire prevention is probably gonna be my strongest, the fire code and inspection is probably gonna be, it's actually my weakest five point of the fire service, uh, to date. I do fire inspections in Oklahoma, I, I'm not I C C certified at this time, matter of fact, I'm actually set up to do the fire inspection, the two-week course at the national, I mean, at the State Fire Academy in, in July, I'm enrolled this year, uh, to get more into that, learn more about the inspection process or whatever. As far as, you know, managing the people that do it here, I, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't, that's probably my weakest part, is the, is the inspection part of it. I don't know the codes as well as I, you know, I know how you use the book, Mayor, but I, I'm not certified as, you know, so, in that position.
And finally, how would you assess the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities of the Starford Fire Department?
I think Starford Fire Department has a great, a great fire department, from what I can tell, as far as the firefighters, the number, the firefighters you got, and the, uh, the guys I've been around, I've had the props, I've had the, the privilege of twice serving on y'all's promotion board before, uh, Chief Mann rewrote it. I'd sit down and, and did, uh, in this room once, and then Station Five once, and, uh, the process you had was really a good process, and I know it needs to weaken, and it, and I think Chief Mann rewrote it some, and, and I think it's a better situation, but, uh, what I can virtually say, you have, you have a, uh, you have a good, strong fire department, and you have some good, strong firemen. And it, and, uh, one thing I would say is, is, if you go through this long extensive process that you've went through here in this room today, it's from this part only, whichever, whichever of the five candidates you decide to choose, and let the fireman, let that chief run his department. Let him run everything through him, and, and maybe keep a lot of things in-house that doesn't bring it to y'all as much. I think in the past, y'all have had a lot come to y'all, but I think in communications and working, the fire chief can work a lot of that out before it ever comes to this board, and, and cuts down some of your clutter, and now maybe getting something you don't want to get into, but I'm just, that's my personal opinion from what I know about your fire, from the outside, sir.
Alderman Perkins.
Yes, sir.
Chief, uh, good evening, I have six questions, and I have, um, actually one question for those who have come in and thanked you. Question one, what is the one most important function of any fire department?
Being prepared. You know, Dave, I, I think the biggest function is, is being prepared. First off, being prepared for the emergency, checking off your trucks, and making sure everything's ready to go when you do have a thing. The second thing, my, my strong source, and my strong point, is what I can bring to Starford Fire Department, is customer service. Customer service is no different than fire services is in Walmart, or, or Walgreens, or any other business, it's a business. And these firemen, when they're not out, when they're not checking trucks off and preparing for fires, they need to be out in the community, they need to be involved in that community. They have twenty-four hours to sit there, they have a few hours to sleep, they need to be involved in the community, in the engine, out there, and learn the people.
Question two, as fire chief, what is your direct responsibility from your wife on a fire scene?
Uh, safety, safety first, and then rescue, and, you know, is the fire chief, or, if, if the fire chief goes, he needs to make sure that, that he's not gonna lose anything. If anybody needs to be rescued, they make sure of that, and then make sure that everything is accounted for after the fire. You know, a lot, you know, you gotta, you gotta have accountability of your firemen during the fire, accountability of equipment, accountability, get everything back, and get it back, and get it back into, uh, into service in a, you know, uh, time, and you need to give them the good equipment to do their job as firefighters, sir.
Question four, when you're delegating functions within the fire department, are you delegating authority, or are you delegating responsibility? Explain your answer.
I like to dedicate responsibilities, I like to give the, the fire, the battalion chiefs their responsibility, and the captains and lieutenants theirs, and that way, they train, and they learn, they, they learn to be ready. And you gotta have the authority to do that, but then y'all, but as you train, if you give them the responsibilities, and then they're learning in the management skill as well. And then as, as they grow, and the fire service, they're ready to jump and take the next leap, you gotta train everybody as they go, and give them the responsibilities, sir.
Question four, what is the fire rating for the city of St. Louis?
The fire rating for the city of St. Louis is a Class Four. Your next, um, Mississippi Fire Rating Bureau, uh, assessment is scheduled for eighteen to two, eighteen to two years. Chances are, with the new rating system coming down from the rating bureau, we're probably looking at thirty, thirty months, or thirty-two months before we get our next record, before you get your next rating here, system rating here. Uh, fours is a tough rating, getting to a three is gonna be hard, but it's not gonna be impossible, but it's gonna take work as of tomorrow. It would take, the next step would be tomorrow, if you wanna get to, if this board chooses to get to threes, it's gonna be tough. And new system is, 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 as the higher you up in the system, if you're eight, or nine, or ten, or six, you're easy to drop to, you know, six, seven, eight, or five. But the fours are gonna be a little less given to get to three, but it's not impossible.
What is the minimum staffing number of a fire station with a fire rating of four?
A minimum requirement has to be four, for classification of four.
Finally, how many years have you served in a command position in fire?
I've, I've, nineteen years, as a volunteer career, uh, my thirty-two.
Mary, you here. Further question? Alderman Webb.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief Tucker, thank you so much for having me.
Thank y'all very much.
This is an appointed position, you will serve at the will of this board, and our terms will expire in twenty seventeen, understand that?
Yes, ma'am, I do, I do understand that. And I would like, may, may, may I comment on just a, just a second?
You're back.
I, I did start off in fire service late as a career, I didn't, I didn't start draw, I did not get on PURB, that, that is real bad grammar. I didn't, uh, start PURB until I was forty-five. At this point in time, I worked on sixty or sixty-two, basically, I'm looking at at least eight years. This is gonna be my last stop in the fire service where, it's eight years or ten years from now, or when y'all's, when y'all's term ends, and the next board doesn't like, doesn't care to renew me, this is, I mean, I, I love it, I'll find, you know, but anyway, uh, I, I, you know, I don't want you to think I'm shopping, and, uh, but that's what it is, and, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank you, ma'am, that's all right, Captain.
If you are appointed fire chief for the city of St. Louis, what would your vision plan be for fire?
Uh, basically, back, like I said, a lot of community, uh, uh, community effort of, uh, working in the community, and, so, I, I'm not saying that I don't know what they do now, but I, I want my firemen out in the community, I want to be active in the community. Each and every one of you have a, have events out of each one of your districts. If you, you know, I, I would like to do at least, as a fire chief, I would like to do at least one event in every district every month, if I can. At, when first getting started, sure, I'm gonna do more than that, 'cause the more I can be in the community, the more I can understand your, your, your constituents' needs, the better I can do my job. And my job, basically, is not only that, is my job is to inform you. So, if there's a need out there that doesn't, that maybe you don't know it arises, and I'm out there working, I'm gonna know that need or whatever. And I, if I can shortcut things and help you get to your, what, thing, and also, whenever we come to buying equipment and stuff, I, I gotta be on top of it to let you know what you gotta do. You know, I've gotta, I've gotta be three... You know, I've gotta, I've gotta be three steps ahead of where equipment is or where trucks are. I gotta be up to that on each and every day so that if there's a need arise, we can replace equipment. We gotta replace it to the best equipment. We don't replace it to equipment that's already three NPA or two NPA standards or one behind. We wanna get the one that's up to date today so we can get longer use out of it, but the price of fire equipment is high.
Chief, create a mission statement. What would your mission statement say?
To...it would be to serve and protect the citizens of Starkville, Chickasaw, I mean, Otten Hall County, and the visitors to this community, and protect them in every way needed and to serve them.
Thank you. And my last final question, chief, is what is your experience of handling the budget? What has been the difference, and what has cleared them out of that?
Budget and for the fire service in Oklahoma, it ranges around three hundred thousand. And I, I have, I've said it each and every year without any help, I go through and figure out all my overtime, I figure my insurance, I virtually know, you know, what VICA and everything is. I look at all my things, I figure my, try to keep it coming at vacation time, so we gotta replace it at vacation time, do each and every thing, all of that. And I keep up with it each and every month as the city clerk give out a, gives out a printout of what we spent, and I go back and put it in my computer and show that I take off that much, and I try to stay into it on at least a monthly basis. Plus, I have a deal where I know basically what I spent, so I try to over, you know, keep up with both of them. You know, and of course, in my situation, and I'm not sure here, is I have a general budget and then I have a fire protection budget. Fire protection is usually a long range, you know, longer range, and of course, you have more stipulations on that money, so you really have to watch what you buy. And some things can be done, a lot of things can be done out of fire protection, that we can save the general fund money, you know, like training and stuff like that, that we can use our fire protection. But you gotta keep it every day, 'cause you can't wait, you can't skip a month, 'cause then you're gonna be behind the, the date balls, for say. You gotta keep it, 'cause it'll sneak up on you if you don't watch each and every dollar you spend, 'cause those are public funds. And at the end of the day, I'm accountable to it, and each and every one of you are. So I watch it closely.
Thank you so much, chief.
Thank you.
Mr. May I deal at this time?
Further question.
Chief Tucker, I'm here.
Thank you.
You know, we're currently fire class four. You alluded to it earlier, how it gets harder to lower your fire rating. What would be one of the obstacles to getting to fire class three?
Without, without really knowing, Devin, I'm really into it. I'm not real familiar, I'm not familiar with your water system. I know, I know that going to three is gonna be real heavy on your water system. I'm not sure if your infrastructure is upgraded. I think I seen a piece on the news the other day where y'all having some infrastructure problems on sewer and water, or need to go up on, you know, need to do some things to get this infrastructure where you need to get. And seeing that interview last week or so, I think that's probably gonna be your hardest problem is your water. Training, I think you gotta push a lot harder on training, on daily training, not only going to Fire Academy, but also the training it does in-house, 'cause training can be a large part of just getting to three. Upgrade trucks, I know you, right now, you have two engines that, that really on borderline. I know you got one that probably needs to be replaced a year or so ago, maybe a close to a year now, maybe a four that needs to be replaced. You're talking, you're talking eighteen, you're talking, excuse me, they told me, you're talking eleven to twelve months on delivery of a truck today. So if you got one goes out or getting ready to go out and it's not on order, then you're behind. And I think, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, I went around, looked at all your trucks. I know you got one really close, and you may have one closer up and behind that. So I know you're looking at really two large, before you even think about going to three, two really large investments of probably a million dollars, you know, four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand each, before you can even get the trucks here to even get down to where you can look at a three. And, and, and those type of things, and...
If a point, what would be one of the first thing or the first thing that you would address?
First thing, I mean, first thing I would have to do, I would, I would wanna meet with each and every fire department, each and every firefighter, starting from, I would probably, I would come in and meet with the command staff and then meet with the battalion chief, and then I was gonna go to the very bottom, I would meet with each and every fire person on this, on this fire department and sit down and talk to them and ask them what their needs are and what are their goals, and what I can help them do to get to their goals. And have, I'd write a spreadsheet on each and every firefighter, from the bottom up to the top. And then, then we'd start working toward that. I mean, not knowing everything I need to know about where we need to be, and then, you know, look at the training, make sure I, and I can get better training. And maybe they're getting fire training, but maybe they're not getting management training. Maybe they don't understand the budget system. Maybe you need to bring them in a room like this, a whole, a whole shift, like shift A or shift B or shift C. Bring them and show them, say, you know, I know you wanna go to class, but you don't understand why I can't send you to class. Let me show you how that works. Let me show you how many dollars we get. Let me show you how many, that only four firemen per, per department can get in any one class a year at Fire Academy. So it's only, you know, there's only so many classes, so if you're limited to four per department, then I'm not always gonna be able to give you everything you want. And that's, that's kinda, that's where you gotta basically start, but you gotta know what your guys need and what their goals are, and then you gotta tell them what your, I gotta tell them what my goals are. Thank you, sir.
Alden Vaughn.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tucker. My son lives in Oklahoma.
Did you hear any good things about me and bad things about me?
No. How many trucks have you managed?
How many, now, in Oklahoma? I have, I have two trucks, and I only have one on-duty guy at a time and myself. And then I have off, my off-duty full-time, I have four full-time career firemen, four part-time career firemen. I would say careers 'cause they're in, they're one thousand, one certified, and they usually work in another department. And I have about fifteen, sixteen volunteers. In the daytime, we're gonna have about three or four guys respond on, or on, typically on the first time, and then usually, I can usually get one or two to bring the second truck or whatever. In that situation, as you know, being from Okla, or having a son live in Oklahoma or no, I still fight fire. When the bell goes off, I'm putting my gear on. Here, maybe not so much as that. I hate, that's the part I really don't wanna lose. I really like fighting fire. I can get to know my guys, I can do a lot more. I gotta know I'm gonna command them, but still, sometimes the battalion chief, considering command for a small fire, I can still get in there and teach the guys I know how to be in there with them. Sometimes you, to learn guys, you gotta be in there with them. But that's what, that's the answer to the question, I'm sorry.
How many firefighters have you managed at one time?
Firefighters I've managed, basically, this past Memorial Day in Oklahoma, I had a scene that had eighty-three firemen on it and nine engines.
Chemical fire?
It was a fire, United Furniture. And we, we didn't lose any structure of the building at all. The time we got smoke damage on it, the time we got through, the insurance company, it was a half a million dollar fire. It was a thirty million dollar building, so...
Alden McColl.
Thank you for applying.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I've noticed that you didn't have a college education, but which college credits or fire-based classes have you completed, and how do you feel as if these are sufficient for this position?
They are. I have not, I have not completed any fire-based college, other, you know, I have not at this time. I basically waited to get my twenty-two out of Euro out of college, and she went to work for the links and got moved to Auburn. But actually, I would like to pursue my, my career, I like to pursue my education at this time, and, 'cause it's really important to grow and learn how to manage things and do a better job. I think it would help a lot, I think it really would help a lot to be able to finish. And I do have intention to finish and, and real, you know, to start it real soon.
I don't discount the fact that you come, that you come from a small fire-based system compared to City of Starkville, and that would do to the fact that probably eighty or ninety percent of the firemen in the United States are volunteers. I appreciate what y'all do. How do you think you can transition from a town of that size to a town of this size at this point?
Well, let me, let me go back, let me go to a little bit different deal and cover a couple of questions here. As I grew up in Sonic driving business, we had forty-two Sonics in three states. We had seven director operations. Each one of those director operations had five or six supervisors under them. Me and my brother was in charge, and another guy was over the director operation. We had different parts of, that we did. I might be in, I might, I could be in New Orleans today, and I had a call that there was a problem in Jacksonville, Florida. Within three hours, most time, I got onto the New Orleans airport, got on a plane, I was addressing the problem in Jacksonville, Florida. And then maybe there for three or four weeks if I had a problem, real problem, and then maybe back to Mississippi, North Mississippi. So as far as the scale of things in Sonic business and the scale of things in the fire service, there's no difference. Management's management. Whether you're managing five hundred, six hundred Sonic drive employees, or you're managing sixty firemen, the logic at the end of the day is the same. You got budgets, you got manpower and things like that. I did all the, I did every one of the complaints. I don't, I don't, I don't tolerate harassment due to sexual orientation, a race, religious beliefs, those type of things, I get on quick. And when I find those things go out, whether it's in business or whether it's a fire department this size or whatever, I'm gonna be on the, I'm not gonna pass that to battalion chief. I'm gonna go deal with those things. I'm gonna deal with discrimination and those things, and I'm really strong in that point. And I don't, I probably went off it, but that's how I would deal with it. I, I don't think, I don't think I have any problem, you know, I'm gonna have some, anybody has a problem. People in cheer is gonna have problems adjusting to it, but I don't, I don't see, with my management background, I'm not gonna have that bigger, it's gonna be an issue, but I am not.
Chief, thank you for agreeing to interview with us tonight and for your service. Question is, why Starkville? Why, why do you wanna be the fire chief in the city of Starkville?
Starkville probably, not slight y'all anyway, probably, and I, I, probably one of the top ten fire departments in the state. And I know each twenty-five figure out it's the top one, and it may be, it may be top five. I, I think it's in the top ten. We'll leave it at that. I think you got a great base. I think, I think you've got a good bush growing here, and I think it's growing great, and I think you're getting into a good tree. And everybody wants to, everybody wants to take part in the, in the great growth, and I think this is a great time at Starkville. And I would love, I, I would like to be here with the rest of this growth or whatever. And, and I, I just, I think it's a challenge, I like a challenge, and I think it's a challenge. It's gonna be a lot of sleep at night. Yes, sir. It is gonna be a lot of sleep at night, but I'm up to that challenge. And, and I usually say more than I'm supposed to say, I'm an LSU fan, but I'm looking forward to becoming a Mississippi State fan. I love SEC baseball, I love SEC basketball. It doesn't matter who's playing. And I, I think this is a great place to be. And everything, my daughter came here to school, and I see a lot of good things here, and I like it. And I like the guys I know that are here. I don't know many of your firefighters, but I know your command staff. And Chief Mann was, was really good to me. I looked up to him. He helped me out a lot when I first got to Oklahoma. He'd been here about a year as a chief before, and he helped me through a lot of things, and it made me think, you know, if that's the caliber of people, then that's where I think I need, that's where I wanna be. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions from the board?
I've got one. And when she will play here in our town, is she...
Yes, ma'am.
What color is your color?
I'll have to wear a Mississippi State if I'm the fire chief here. I don't have any whole lot of choice. You want me to sign that now? Actually, actually, my daughter gave me a Mississippi State hat when she first came here for Christmas, and my dad was a Mississippi State fan, so... I married a girl from Louisiana twenty-seven years ago, and I sort of inherited that part, so...
Thank you, chief.
And I would, I would really, and I know, you know, ma'am, sorry, I'm wondering, no, go ahead, it's up to you now. Are you ready for closing deal or not?
Do you have any questions for us?
I, I, I did, I can think of at this time, really. I know the transition, getting boot here is gonna be a little issue, and I, you know, it asks for some restraint, you know, just a little bit. I do have a plan in mind. I've already thought about that plan, Station Five not manned all the time, you know, on every shift for now. I would probably stay on Monday and Tuesday, might run home on Wednesday night and stay back here Thursday or so, and then maybe in and out on the weekends until I can get moved. I don't know exactly the timeframe of what you asked me to move. I don't know how quick I can get that done as far as, this is the time of year, I know when a lot of people leaving rental property, so it's probably the right time to come in and try to find rental property. But it's gonna take a little bit to rent a house and get here or whatever, you know, get my family here, get my wife here, the only one I got right now. But I've got a plan to stay here if I have to, you know, if I can find a place to rent in a day or two, I'll do that or whatever, you know, just, that's gonna be the biggest deal. And y'all hadn't really said anything to me about that, I'm just putting it out there.
Sorry.
Now, I do have a trip planned to Washington, DC to represent, I am president of Mississippi Fire Chief Association, I did not tell you that. And I've served for one year. My term will be up in June, and I have the right to run another term, but that definitely be up this board if that's something you want your fire chief to be involved in. You know, I'm big, real big in MML. You and I met, you know, seen several times in MML, and as virtue president of the chief association, you're huge in the MML. I have a lot of things to do with it as well. But we do have a DC trip planned on the fourteenth, come back on the seventeenth for the Mississippi Fire Chief Association. But other than that, I'll have a whole lot of commitments and things.
Alden Carter.
I was gonna ask, other chief as well, but do you, I was gonna ask that, what kind of networking abilities do you have? And I guess with that association to ask, if you get in, you know, just like you use Chief Mann, you know, do you plan on using those, or is there any kind of administrative details they can help with or...
I can, this bunch of guys sitting right here along this wall right here, there's a great bunch of guys. I can call either one of them, get anything I need as quick as I need it. They've all went through every experience that I'm gonna go to. And we tell people all the time, we tell young chiefs, I had a, young chief got hired in Amory, Hawaii, telling them, don't reinvent the wheel, because one of us in the fire service has already been through that. We've already got, maybe it's not round as it needs to be for Starkville, or maybe it's not for that specific community, but if one of these guys, especially these guys and my other guy, the other chiefs in the state, they'll help you out anything. You can put an email out, and I need to know what vacation policy is for your, for the department. And you can get twenty or thirty emails in a few minutes and help you make things. While I was going through the sprinkler deal in Oklahoma, I had some things, needs, I had club issues and it had sprinkler issues. I called Chief Mann, and I called a couple of chiefs, and within thirty minutes, I had y'all sprinkler orders. I had y'all club ordinances. I had Columbuses, and, and if you, you will run yourself to death, and you will absolutely, you won't get any sleep if you try to take on each and every task by yourself, 'cause these, every guy, every fire chief in the state of Mississippi will help you. And we lean on each other a lot.
Any further questions or comments for us, chief?
Not really. At the end of the day, I get to be your fire chief, and at the end of the day, I want all my firemen and go home. I want, that's the one comment I made, I'm gonna make to their, their wives and their children, is that when they get through working for me on a twenty-four hour shift, I'm gonna send them back home. And that's my biggest commitment to them and to this city, is that I'm gonna make, make a safe and working environment and make sure, if all possible, each and every fireman goes home each and every day safe from injury or mental problems or neglect or anything like that.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir. Thank y'all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
All right, just checking.
I don't think you're taking a nap on us.
That room service might have come.
Scott, you're not taking a nap on, are you?
What?
You're not taking a nap, are you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Officer Yarborough, Hepsi. Charles, if you want to leave.
The small hooks though.
Officer Yarborough, while the hooks are being passed out, let me go over a little housekeeping review.
Yes, sir.
First off, thank you very much for your willingness to go through this process. I believe it's a very tough interview, because it is an interview with a group, and it is an interview right in the middle of a public meeting. Your willingness to participate in this process, I believe speaks volumes of your commitment to the Starkville Fire Department. So we thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Now, a little bit about the process. In a moment, I'll give you an opportunity to make any opening comments that you may wish to make. I will ask you some questions, and then I will open the floor for the board to ask you any questions that they may have. And finally, I'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions you may have of us. Do you have any questions about the process before we start? All right, would you like to make any introductory comments?
I would. Kind of do like an introduction of who I am. First of all, thank my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ for, and the Lord of all of them, for allowing me to have this opportunity to get a chance to promote within the department. I've been employed to see this talk for the last twenty years. I'm a lifelong resident of Ickebell County. I have, I've just been living in Starkville for the last twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four years. I have five kids, and my wife, Astanya, is an assistant supervisor for business and Medicaid. I am a veteran of the United States Army and National Guard, while serving stateside, and that's a sheer, that's a strong. Plus, education-wise, I have a associate degree in graphic design, EMCC. I have my bachelor's degree from University of Memphis in fire administration, fire performance technology. I have a master's degree in executive fire leadership. And also, currently, I'm finishing my requirements for my doctorate in organizational leadership. My training hours, I have over thirteen hundred training hours at the Mississippi State Fire Academy. I've attended the National Fire Academy in Emmsburg, Maryland eight times, where I did a normal class in leadership management, organization theory. And finally, probably, the most, probably a lot of people don't know, I am an associate minister at Truth Christian School. So that's, that's my, that's my background, so, thank you.
Thank you. Officer Yarborough, what experiences have you had that you feel prepare you for the emergency response side of the fire department?
I've been doing this for twenty years now. And during my time of twenty years, I have, for the first thirteen years, I served as a firefighter, driver of a truck, and also a lieutenant. So basically, I had emergency experience up until that point. Once I got into administration, I've been doing all the training. I trained everybody, with sixty-two people, I trained every one of our people in some type of emergency response. I'm doing this all day. I, I do this every day. So my whole goal is, every training I had, every, all the skills I had, go back to emergency response. We train for every type of emergency. I've been to every different class to teach every different emergency. So my training experience got me to this position now, so I think that will make me where I'm at right now.
And what experience do you have that you feel prepares you to lead the fire code enforcement inspections side of the department?
As far as that goes, I have just very little experience on that. Not very much at all. When it comes to that, I would be leaning more on, delegating that more to my fire marshal and fire inspectors to take care of that part of it, because I don't really have that much experience doing that. I know a little bit about it, but not, not as much, of course, there is none.
And I actually noticed that you had a little bit about this next one in your package you put together. But how would you assess the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities that the fire department as it stands?
As it stands, we have great, as far as strengths go, we have a great department. We have great personnel. They do exactly what they're supposed to do. Emergency hit, they take care of what needs to be taken care of. We have strength for the physical fitness goal. We have a physical fitness department containing an emergency. Weaknesses, look at weaknesses, biggest thing probably gonna be right now would be the man of station five. Right now, we don't have enough personnel to cover that station, so that's gonna be one of the biggest weaknesses. That'll be one of my first issues to address if I were elected fire chief. Other than that, I think the grievances have been an issue in the past. The way I would control that, the way I would deal with that, is be open, fair, and consistent with that. I think if you, with me, I think all agreements are stopping the chief officer. If you get taken care of there, then we don't have to come to the board with it. So that would be some of our weaknesses. Do you have any? Opportunity, as far as opportunities, we have opportunities right now to field station five. If we award the grant, I applied for a grant. Chief Mann was here, I got permission to apply for a safer grant. If we get the safer grant, and we could man the station five, we would get eight firefighters for two years. The city would have to, after the two years, we'd have to come in and pay for those firefighters. But right now, we can have those firefighters for two years, and we can man station five and have it taken care of. So that's our opportunity, alternative funding, that would be opportunity. And as far as our, I guess our challenges, our challenges right now would be, I'm in this for a budget. Of course, we know the budget is, we don't have enough money to do everything we need to do, so that would be one of our challenges.
Al McCarver.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Mr. Yarborough, I have six questions. I have actually the same question to the other half that received from you. Question number one, what is the one most important function of being a fire department?
The one most, citizens, taking care of our citizens. Customer service, making sure our citizens are safe at all times. That's the most important thing in the fire department.
Question two, as fire chief, what is your direct responsibility when you arrive on the fire scene?
My direct responsibility would be totally in charge of that scene if I deemed fit. The way we have our system set up now, that we, if our chief has an opportunity, he has a, he can take over, or he don't have to take over. If I were battalion chief, we have great battalion chiefs that are doing a good job, then at that point, I would just meet with them, make sure everything was taken care of. So it would determine if I would move forward or not to take over the scene depending on what they do.
Question three, when you are delegating functions within the fire department, are you delegating authority, or are you delegating responsibility? Explain your answer.
I would be delegating responsibility. They had the authority when they got the position. They also had, really had responsibility, but I would be delegating responsibility, not authority. With the rank, come the authority.
Four, what is the fire rating for the city of Starkville?
The current fire rating is, excuse me, a four.
Five, what is the minimum staffing number for a fire station with their fire rating of four?
The minimum staffing would be, and it's called, of course, it's depending on the number of stations we have. Be four for engine company, four for a ladder company, it'd be three for engine company. So right now, on the ship we have on tomorrow, our ship would be, it would be anywhere from fourteen to sixteen. That's with the Mississippi Bureau rating, Mississippi Bureau.
Finally, how many years have you served in a command position in fire suppression?
I've served in a command position for a total of thirteen years.
I yield, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further questions? Al McCarver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Yarborough, first of all, thank you so much for your service to our country. This is an appointed position, and it's elected. I'm just sort of at the whim and pleasure of the board, and our terms expire in twenty, June of twenty seventeen. Do you understand that?
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. I'm at the beck and calling the board.
Thank you. If you are appointed fire chief for the city of Starkville, what would your vision plan be for this level? I had it here, will you share that with us?
Okay, and this is not in a particular order, but one of my first things I'll do would be reconstruction of the organization. I think we need assistant chief. I also think that we need to, we have a fire marshal division. I think we need to have two inspectors and have a fire marshal hold down inspectors. So I think we need to add a third position that's been there for a while, that's been baking for a while, so we need to take care of that position. Also, I would probably do something different with the training officer. Make him a training chief and have three, maybe three, training officers on the shift. That way, training officer could take care of things that need to be taken care of with EMS, and we have people on the shift, and they will give them more responsibility for training. I would do that, I would try my best to staff, fully staff station five. And that may be done in two different ways. I have, in my package, I have two options. One option is safer grant, which I just mentioned about how we can go with safer grant. The second one would be maybe to work out something with the board of all of them and the mayor to figure out a way over the next three or four years, get personnel in, maybe two or three at a time. I know we'll probably be able to possibly get all eight firefighters at one time, but maybe we could work out some of the next two or three years to get that taken care of. Lower our current rating from a level four to a level three. After speaking with the Mississippi Bureau rating, excuse me, Mississippi rating bureau, it's possible if we get station five staff, that we may could get to a level three or rating three. That's one of the things that we have to have station five staff, so that's a possibility we can get that taken care of. In addition, it also establishes a mentoring program for our city youth. Right now, we are always looking for firefighters. I bet, I think the best way to do that is start at the high school level. Get those guys and any girls interested in being firefighters from right now at that level, move them forward. Then at the end of that, at the end of that year when they graduate high school, I found out there are one hundred and forty-two scholarship opportunities that we have not taken advantage of for fire service, so we could get out, get out new firefighters, the ones that graduate high school, get them into college, give them a two-year degree, then bring them back to the Starkville Fire Department. We have trained firefighters right there. We already know them because we've been working with them for the last maybe two or three years, so we would know them from that point. And plus, it would keep some of our youth off the street and maybe keep them in a good direction. In addition to that, I will establish a community smoke detector program to ensure that every home has at least two working smoke detectors. That, that was something that Mr. Al McCarver mentioned a couple of years ago. I think we never took advantage of it, but that would be one of the things, first thing we want to do, make sure that Starkville, all our senior citizens, maybe some of our areas don't have as much money, make sure we get them taken care of, because we don't want to have any fire deaths due to lack of smoke detectors in our home. Address pay in accordance with all ranks of Starkville Fire Department. I'm sure y'all, the board is aware, we have several issues with pay. We have firefighters making more than sergeants, sergeants making more than tenants. So at some point, we need to address that issue, and I hope we've been able to address that issue. After that, we'll develop a succession plan that addresses all mills of the department. I found out just because you don't want to move forward, don't mean, don't mean that you need to be left behind. Succession plan could also mean move people up higher, but also you can move them horizontally. So some people may be like I was, I was in the line, but I moved to administration, so we may have to do that. That starts with succession planning. Conduct a citizen survey would probably be one of the first things I'd do. I think we need to know from our citizens what type of job we're doing. They are our ultimate bosses, so we need to know from them what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. They may say everything is fine, they may say we need this, so that's, because we want to have great customer service. Establish a vehicle replacement plan. We have some vehicles right now that are reaching the end of their service line. We need to do something to get that taken care of before we get caught, and say we depend on that. We have five or six vehicles that need to be taken care of, so we can start some type of plan now to get that taken care of. Establish a grant writing committee. There are several different grants out there that need to be taken care of. As the fire chief, that would be my responsibility, make sure that you did something to get those grants in place. I wrote a grant, we, we came to station, get the station to a level, the city to a rating four. We needed a training facility. I went out and researched, and I wrote a grant, and we received a three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar grant to get a training facility, that training facility at station three. I'm not sure how many of y'all have seen it or not, but it's also helps our firefighters be better because we get a chance to train in there. So I would try to figure out every grant we could get and use those grants to make our department and community better. In addition to that, I will place a computer in each station. It won't have to be a new computer, we may have some old computers at the stations, old P, city hall. That way, we can use that to use firefighters to fill out visiting reports. Currently, our administrative assistant, she spends about seventy-five percent of her time filling out reports. So if we could do, get our firefighters to take care of reports, and she could be freed up to do other things to help with the grants, or do other situ, things like that. And eventually, if the city keeps growing like we hope it does, we don't have to construct a new fire station. Eventually, maybe I don't dare go, if the city continues to grow that way, the stations, the stations cannot be known on a mile and a half apart, so if the city continues to grow, we may have to put a station out there before it's out of the city line. So that would be my five-year plan. Maybe take it only five years, but maybe not, so.
I have one, two more questions. You were to put together a mission statement. Or to become fire chief, what would your mission statement be?
I would keep my mission statement the same way it is now, to protect the citizens of Starkville and all who in our city, and all who pass through. I, I would keep our mission statement the same, but as far as our vision statement, our vision statement was wrote in nineteen, probably, I think eighty-five. So I would change our vision statement. And I, and I put, in my package, I put in there, propose changing for vision statement. I think as the chief changed, the division needs to change. Because my business is gonna be a little bit different, maybe from Chief Mann's vision or Chief Ryan's vision, my vision is gonna be different. So as the chief changes, the vision also needs to change, so I would definitely do that.
My last question is, what is your experience in handling the budget?
My experience in handling budget, for the last seven years, I have been tasked with the training budget. So every year, I had to get together a budget, get the classes together, turn that budget in. I was turning in Chief Mann then. Keep up with that budget every year, keep up with what happened with the budget. Once we get toward the end of the year, of course, we had to start tightening down and maybe cutting classes back, because out of my budget came everything to do with training, everything for certification. So classes came up, travel came out also, so we, we, everything had to be taken, covered in my budget, so I had to also have to keep up with that for the entire year. So during my seven years, I never had an issue with it, and everything was taken care of toward the end of the year, so.
Let me make these comments. As we took our board calendar statement, that these are some of your colleagues here supporting you tonight.
Right. They, I talked with one of my fire chiefs, Chief Banks, and he told me that, I told him I was interviewing for the job, and he said that they were coming up to support me, so thank y'all for coming.
That's very talented. And I would be listed out of the safety. I suspect that those are your payers, or something, they're sleeping behind you.
They are.
But your payers will probably come out. Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Any further questions from the members of the board?
You'd already touched on it. I already raised a question when I asked, but being an interim candidate, what would be one of the first issues or problems, barriers that you'd want to address in the side of the board?
The first issue I would address, I almost said it would be a mission, the first thing I would address would be my vision. I would share my vision with the department, because I want us all to be on one page and one accord, get it taken care of upfront, that way everybody, if you have any questions, any situation, we will get that taken care of. Actually, my first one would be, I'd say, basically like a standing room meeting, like the president would do. Get every member of the department together at one time, talk about the vision, what we want to go, what our plan on going forward, answer any questions that they would have at that point, and then from there move forward.
What can be improved in our fire department by one of you as chief?
What can be improved? I think that we have a good department. I think our department would be better because of my leadership. I think that we could move our rating from a class three, class four to a class three. I think that we could help the citizens out by, like I said, by smoke detector program. I think that would be a great idea. I think that our fire department could go down as one that gave back to the city of Starkville by helping the youth out with this mentoring program. I think it'd be a model for other departments throughout the state, so I think that that's what I would bring to the table.
Further questions? Al McCarver.
Thank you for the time. I enjoy having internal candidates, because we can pick your brain about, you know, things within each department. And this, this training chief, and you're asking, you're saying that you envision a staff member on each shift. Would that be a new salary position, or would that be somebody that was like a lieutenant that just got a, maybe an incremental increase in pay to do that out?
I would make sure the training chief, I would have on each shift, I don't really make a difference who, it could be a firefighter. If that firefighter showed initiatives, we have some great firefighters show initiatives to train and to give back to the department, then some type of incremental, maybe five percent increase in their pay to do the extra job. But yeah, it would be just, it would be a shift thing, every shift would have a training officer.
Okay. You said there were, I mean, one hundred and forty-two scholarship opportunities?
Right.
Can you tell us about that, and what kind of state? Is it a state agency that provides those, or is it?
It's different type of people that buy them. Some Lowe's, it's not maybe not the Lowe's, here Home Depot, these are all throughout the state. University of Memphis provides one, extra provides four different scholarships. That I checked into, that we could actually get high school students in. We have a, one of our members, he is the coordinator for the Marine Community Council. They have a fire science program there. And I talked with him, spoke with him, we spoke with his bosses, and they possibly would help us out with maybe getting a couple of scholarships to, to maybe some needed candidates to do.
And the last thing is, another candidate mentioned maybe to go from a class four to a class three. Maybe, there may be time to, he said something about a fire tower, maybe on a two-acre site or something, one of those being the aspects that were lacking in our training. Can you be the training officer, talk to that, is that true or false, or?
What happened, we, when we got to level four, the training building that we had took care of that.
Okay. So the tower at station three is sufficient?
The tower at station, the training facility at station three is sufficient.
Right.
That's what we needed. After speaking with them, the tower would be, I mean, the training facility would be sufficient. That would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Sheriff Yarborough, thank you very much for agreeing to interview us. Thank you for your commitment to the service to the city of Starkville. My question simply is, why be the fire chief in Starkville? Why is, why are you the best candidate to serve in that capacity?
I feel I'm the best candidate because, first of all, I have been committed to, by all of the Starkville Fire Department, but get to see this Starkville in the fire service for the last twenty years. During my time, I have went out, and we all had the same opportunities. I went out, got my education, but I just didn't want to, if I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna do it right. I'm gonna do my very best at it. So I went out and got my education. Once, I stood before the board seven years ago, and I was told that I didn't have any administrative experience. So I took initiative. When the training chief job came open, I went, applied for the job, got promoted to training chief to make sure that when this came, when this day came, I would have everything I needed. So I got my, got my degree. So I got my, got my degree. I felt like it may not have been enough, and I wanted to learn more, so I went and got my master's degree. After that, I still had the itch to learn more, so I went and applied and got into doctoral program. So I think with all that, with my training, with my education, I think it makes me the best candidate. When you look at personnel, I get along with every, all the guys up there, and that's not always a good thing. People say you have, if you're gonna be the chief, you have to be a bad guy. I think sometimes you do, but I think sometimes you have to sit, there's nothing wrong with sitting across the table and getting on somebody in this room, but there's nothing wrong with putting a chair to the side and, and talking to them about their family issues. So I think you have to have both, so I think with all that, I think it makes me the best candidate.
Thank you.
Love that.
Any further questions for Officer Yarborough?
I just got something I want to say, uh. Four years ago, Charles was talking to my leader. I didn't text him. And so I said, Charles, I said, you're chief, you probably will come up someday. Well, the man probably won't be here long. I said, he probably will be retired. So get this position, I'm open again. Thank you for sticking around.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Webb.
I would be remiss to add this, thank you for everything that you do for PTOs, um, Dussel. I spent two years ago, I saw two of our Alderman there, they're in their house, they were all in the middle of Alderman Vaughn's.
Right.
And I had a chance to meet, and I love that you've done that, and several.
Several years, six years, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Thank you so much.
Further questions from the members of the board? Any further questions? Officer Yarborough, do you have questions for us?
No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
All the candidates are here, let me give me a second. All the candidates have waited, let another, another interview.
Scott, you still there? Scott?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Wake up.
I hope you have unlimited minutes. As I see, all five candidates are back in the room. Uh, thank you very much, gentlemen. Job very well done. Those were five excellent interviews. The next matter before the board is the consideration and discussion of appointment of fire chief. Alderman Carr.
I think what everybody wants tonight is an open and transparent form of government. I've heard it said a lot over the last six years, I've been dealing with this, and it's gonna be one of those that has a lot of volatile points to it, but then at the same time, I think it's, it's best to be handled in this situation. I don't, before we get into this matter, I don't want to see the board wait another day. I think it'd be over in fifteen or twenty minutes, either way. Uh, I think that you had five excellent candidates. I, I think almost everybody's in here, and y'all did really well. I appreciate the other chiefs coming out from around the state and, uh, I know as a board, we, um, I learned a lot. I learned a lot tonight all the way around. I learned that our city's got, uh, a desire to go from a class four to a class three. I think we're on the, on the verge, our population growth that we're seeing is gonna help with that, but at the same time, there's come some challenges with that. Um, I personally, uh, enjoyed each and every one of them. I thought that, I'm just, I'm being open and honest, I think I, I lean toward an internal candidate for the fact that, uh, anytime that you come into a situation like, especially police and fire, um, it, it's to the advantage of the person coming in if they're in there. They say there's a two to five year learning curve in any business, uh, platform you get into for the fact that you gotta know who to push and who to pull, and, uh, Mr. Boyd can probably speak to that. Um, there's one individual that I just, I think stands out from my opinion, and that's, and that's from not only my, uh, personal experience and knowing him, but also the fact of all the firemen they've called, and, and it's somebody that, that I just continually get calls, from everybody involved, from all, you know, all parts of the ladder command chain that say that, that he's got the respect. Uh, I think he went and did his education and finished it, and, uh, I think when this discussion's done, I'm gonna support Charles Yarborough first. Can I make a motion now or I can wait until coming?
It's up to you.
I'd like to make a motion. Do we have anything in writing yet?
You can, you can just make a motion.
Okay, I move to appoint, uh, Charles Yarborough, fire chief, effective, uh, immediately.
Motion has been made by Alderman Carrver to appoint.
I need to know what we're gonna pay him.
Randy, do you have a salary recommendation?
Uh.
Just grade step.
The, the salary range for the fire chief position, that's a salary grade eighteen. The range is, um, minimum sixty-five, two seventy-six to eighty-six, eight seventy-four. That's, that's the range.
What is it now? Step eighteen?
Uh, it's salary grade eighteen. I'll have to, uh.
Forty-seven, two.
I think his current salary is around forty-eight.
Forty-seven, two.
I'd recommend, with my motion, I recommend a starting salary of sixty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-six, uh, grade, step eighteen.
That's grade eighteen, step what, Randy?
Step one.
All right. Alderman Carrver has made a motion, uh, to.
Second.
Appoint Charles Yarborough, uh, fire chief of the Starville Fire Department, effective immediately at a grade eighteen, step one. That is, what is the amount?
Sixty-five, two seventy-six.
Sixty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-six dollars, uh, per year. Alderman Carrver, is that your motion?
Yes.
Give me a second. Second, it's Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Carrver, do you wish to speak on the merit?
No, sir.
Discussion. Any discussion? Alderman Walker.
Uh, I would just, again, like to say that I think we had five excellent, uh, candidates and five excellent interviews tonight, and, uh, I, I learned a great deal from each of you. I think that, uh, that Starville is on the verge of significant growth, we're experiencing that now. Uh, and I think that, uh, at least a couple of the candidates, uh, talked about the, the idea of, uh, establishing an assistant chief position or re-establishing an assistant chief position. That is something that I think, as we continue to, to grow and move forward, is likely something that we're gonna, as a board, have to, to look at, uh, very seriously about how we do that. Um, I think if, uh, the vote does go in, in favor of Officer Yarborough, I think he's, uh, produced a document that, um, that I, I'm curious to, to read a little bit more, to find out a little bit more about what, uh, some of the plans are, as I am for looking at the other candidates, that, that brought things, because, uh, I think one of the things, whatever, uh, does happen tonight, uh, we're going to continue to have a very strong fire department. Um, and what makes a very strong fire department is, uh, good leadership and very strong firefighters. Um, and I believe we, we're in a position to have that, we do have that. Um, and whenever there's a change in, in leadership, uh, changing a vision is one thing, but if you don't have the people behind you that support that vision, uh, it, it's gonna be, so getting everybody, getting everybody on board, I think, i- is key in any time you make a transition. Um, I think, I have heard it, uh, said before and I, and I agree, that preventative firefighting is, uh, the actual showing up to the fires, probably, uh, that's the end result. Uh, preventative measures that we are taking place in Starville, and I think we're doing an excellent job of that, i- is first and foremost. I heard a lot tonight mentioned, uh, from every candidate about getting more involved in the community, uh, whether di- through different programs or different public education. I think that's absolutely a critical component of our, of our fire station. And I am very eager to find ways to be able to do that and for us to be able to help, uh, the fire department be as successful as it can be with, uh, us moving forward. So again, I would like to say thank you to everybody for, for your time tonight. Uh, it's been a very, uh, good experience and a, and a good learning experience for me to find out a little bit more about our own department and other departments and, uh, the, the good things that firefighters doing around the state. So thank you very much for your time.
Alderman Webb.
Mr. Callan, thank you so much. Mr. McMonley, thank you so much. Mr. Rainbow, thank you so much. Mr. Tucker, thank you so much. But tonight, I knew that my hand in, I wanted to keep an open mind. But what I do is that you have, you're great. In front of cameras, and it's kind of like the actress, huh? Why should I live in my house and go to someone else's house and look for something else? In my house, I already asked the best. Mr. Rainbow, excellent. Great serving lady to pass. Mr. Stein, you're young, you'll have an opportunity when the time comes. Thank you all so much. Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor at this time.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion saying none? Please answer yea, nay, or abstain when the clerk calls your name on Alderman Carrver's motion to appoint, uh, Charles Yarborough, fire chief, at a grade eight, step, uh, a grade eighteen, step one, effective immediately.
Alderman Vaughn. Fire chief of purpose.
Nay.
Alderman Webb.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Alderman Mayner.
Nay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Carter.
Yeah.
Four yays and three nays.
By a vote of four in favor with three against, this measure passes. And I believe that is all you have on your agenda tonight. Oh, congratulations, uh, Chief Yarborough. All right, we do need, well, hold on, we do need to formally adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn till what, what we, what, six, seven? April the seventh?
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to adjourn until April the seventh, twenty fifteen, at five thirty in the courtroom at City Hall located at one oh one East Lampkin Street. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Hey, do I, do I hear a second? All those in favor pushing the button saying aye, all opposed pushing the button saying nay. Your man McMonley passes, we stand in the jury. Alderman Mayner, we're.